Okay, at this time I'll call the April 6, 2017 Dixon County Commission Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your eye, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On our agenda today, there's three additions. And so the additions are a bid for a copy machine, this is for the county attorney's office, also in regards to a lease purchase agreement on the new ambulance. And then the third one, letters to the congressional delegation asking for support of tax exempt municipal bonds. And so with that, I would move that we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
We have the motion and the second for approval. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda includes the minutes of March 30th work session, the regular meeting also, payroll of $258,187.29, and utilities for $10,729.90.
Move approve consent agenda.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second for approval of the consent agenda. Any other discussion or questions? Otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Craig, we'll start with you for commissioner comments.
Yeah, last Thursday night I got home, I had a gentleman from up in Fraggin Hill Township contacted me and I went and looked at his road. Doctor Brad called him and see if we can work out if they need to get some rock haul up from Fraggin Hill Township. Janelle and I attended the North Central Regional Planning Commission and the big topic, I should say, we spent probably an hour and a half on the North Central Regional Planning Commission getting involved in nuisance abatements for the counties, which was a really tantalizing subject. Yeah, maybe I spent an hour and a half on something like that.
Does that mean they'll start taking those over?
Well, yeah, well, if you want to pay for it.
Oh, well, okay.
Some of the small counties, the one they were working on, the biggest one was in Superior, Nebraska.
Right.
A town of about, I can't remember, 20,000?
I don't know.
Yeah. And some of them will just be like, like Woodbine, just have some smaller communities. But the communities pay them to come in and take the heat for doing what they should be doing themselves. I guess that'd be a nice way of putting it. That's all I have left. Oh, I did get a couple of emails. I got a deal to Commissioner Myers here from Ben Sexton. I thought your interview in the paper was clear and concise, a few dozen wonderful job, and that's all. I'd like to say thank you. I thought it was, I heard a lot of good comments about your article, or the comments in favor of Brad, or LeBurn.
Yes.
That's all I have left.
Okay, thank you. LeBurn?
Saturday, I was invited to go over to Harrington. They had a legislative forum over there, and since I represented that part of Dixon County, Dave Baker was there. He is the 68th district representative, and his area is Chase, Gary, Town of Harrington, and Morris Counties, and he was there. I felt like we had a very good discussion with him on the legislative things that they've been dealing with down there, and I think maybe that is a person that we should get more acquainted with, and I think, like I say, some of our issues that concern us, I think he would be a person that we kind of, from the conversations that we had Saturday, I felt like he understood our problems and some of the bills that he would support, I think, if we got in contact with him. So, he gave me a bunch of cards, so I'll give all of you some cards if anybody wants a card for him. All three of us yesterday, was up at Clay Center yesterday for the North Central Regional Highway Meeting. Thought that was very good presentations. It's just kind of sad that they're not doing any more statewide work this year because of the limited amount of money they have in the KDOT. So, that was a little bit of the discussion that day. I do want to thank you for putting my comments on the Justice Center. I have spoken to a few people, and like I say, I think we need to keep making contacts with some of those people to just see what direction the voters would like us to take on that. This invitation to the community foundation, Brad, was you gonna send these in for, so you want us to use?
What's our expiry date on that? By April 20th. So, might let you know next week at least.
Yeah, you can put my name down as you're gonna attend. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, LeBurn. I also heard some positive comments about the comments you had made in the article in the newspaper, and, you know, there's a lot of ideas out there, so that's what we want to communicate and hear what some of the concerns are that people have as we move ahead on that. This morning, the three commissioners and staff and Brad, we made a trip out to Jeep Road and just to see the progress as far as some bridge work out there. And then earlier this morning, we had Susie Gassman here and Carol White here, and then Brenda Bowers also was in attendance, and a lot of the discussion is some of the community concerned that there's some people falling through the gaps as far as help with Medicare and Medicaid, and when it comes to enrollment and the, some of the prescription planning and so on, and it's very difficult for some of these people to get the help and assistance they need. And it really is a community problem because it's impacting a lot of the elderly in a negative way, or those that have needs from a medical standpoint. And it's something that, it's been difficult for the doctors, and we recognize the problem, but what we need to do is find a solution. And Brenda, do you have anything to add to that since you're here and you were part of that discussion?
I think the, they seemed interested in the option of seeking funding for a part-time person to do that, you know, through grants or donations or whatever, to get it off the ground, so to speak, and then the county had discussed the possibility of if there was space, letting that person use that space. But I thought a lot of the, some of the issues were not necessarily strictly related to seniors. But I thought that was a good start, and Carol and Susie were both very interested in that.
And, you know, it's something where they're, they work with this, and the doctors and the medical community do, but the seriousness of it is there are people that are kind of falling through, and it is overwhelming. And when you start to get volunteers or someone to help in that situation, there's confidentiality portions of it that are extremely important, but it also involves paperwork that you really have to know what you're doing, and we provide some help through the extension office, you know, in some of this area, but I mean, there are some concerns, and so there's going to be some ongoing discussion because it really is something that goes beyond identifying a problem. It's to the stage we need to solve the problem, and especially, you know, for people here in the community that have that need. And I appreciated Brenda coming in on that because she's worked with seniors a lot in the medical field. I was gonna mention also that there's a meeting in Fort Riley tomorrow, and I plan to attend that, and the commanding general Frank is going to have that meeting and just talk about the outreach that Fort Riley has and the community partnerships that we have. The other thing that I thought I would mention, at the meeting that we attended the other day, the highway and bridge meeting, Commissioner Chamberlain brought up to the KDOT official and just asked about one of the, the bridge situation over there in Gary County, and even though it is in Gary County, a lot of people up in the northeast part of our county, I mean, they, you know, that Highway 18 is one that they use, and I kind of thought, well, we're gonna get an answer here because there's been some delays and there's been some unforeseen circumstance that they've ran into, and basically, they, KDOT just kind of said, you know, there's some things going on there, and we'll tell you about it next year. And so I don't know what it is for the timetable, but, you know, it also gives us an idea of some of the frustration that we run into because, you know, we aren't trying to pile on or anything like that, we just want to know, what do we tell, you know, people that have concerns and people that, you know, would want to use that road and just want to find out, when is the bridge gonna be open?
Tell them to tell them next year.
Yeah. So, you know, if Craig makes a comment like that to someone and they think that he's kind of taking it lightly, he's actually, that was the information he got, and I was kind of disappointed to hear that response. I mean, I realize there's sometimes that maybe they don't want to tell all, but I was disappointed with that answer.
And I'll comment on that too. Since I've been accounting information now for going on four and a half years, it's questions you get from people out there that think you should know the answer. And the bridge problem, I was sitting at the, what do you know about the line falls at 18 and 77? I go, don't you know about that? I said, no, it's in Gary County for one thing, and so like, they should be telling you, but, and I know a little more about the situation, but I, because I've seen that they've uncovered part of the work that they've done, so they're evidently, between the design and the way it was put in, they may have to, the bonding company are probably involved.
Sounds like there might be some litigation involved is why you couldn't really say.
Change orders, yeah. So, anyway.
Yeah.
But, you know, that does kind of give an example of where we try to be communicating with the KDOT, and, you know, we have some concerns with KDOT on some of the funding that's been pulled away because one of the other issues that came up is when you have pushed projects back on roads that need to be maintained and upgraded and so on, basically you have another year or two years of additional deterioration. And so, anyway, it was, that was part of our discussion yesterday. That's all I have. Are there, is there anyone in the audience that would want to make a comment or have a question on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead, and we have two proclamations, and it's, the first one I'll read has to do with the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. This is for April 9th through 15th, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and medics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and medics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Dixon County Emergency Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are a vital single link for our law enforcement officers, firefighters, medics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators of Dixon County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore, be it resolved that the commissioners of Dixon County declare the week of April 9th through 17th, 2017, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Dixon County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. Signed the sixth day of April, 2017, by the County Commission of Dixon County. And is there a motion for approval of this proclamation?
I saw a move that we declared the week of April 9th to 15th as telecommunications appreciation week, and really do appreciate you ladies sitting in the back row.
Second.
We have the motion and the second, and the gentleman in the back row, we also appreciate you.
You too, Russ.
And so, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Would you please come up here for a picture, and we'll present this proclamation.
I'll get out of it.
I was gonna stand behind you so you could put the whole skin thing on.
Well, I'd have to take a little more hair off, but you gotta be behind us.
Come on behind here.
Sure.
She can adjust her camera for glare.
She's gonna have to do a lot of adjustments.
If you can photoshop this, it'll be.
Probably shouldn't use standing here. There we go. Okay, I'm gonna take about two or three of those.
I get a dollar picture. I'll take three.
Get on one more smile.
Well, that's pretty much.
That's why we introduced you to one of them.
This is Jenny Stuck. She's been with us two years, just sent her to communications training after officer school, now she's leaving in July. Sorry, my bad. The orange is Amanda Purdom, she's been with us a couple of years. Next is Alyssa Boss, she's been here forever plus a day. And next to her is Joyce Kramer, she's our day shift supervisor, and she has the other day plus. So she, how long you been here, Joyce?
Twenty-three years.
Twice.
Then on the end is Marcy Rife, she's been here two years. Everybody else is working or asleep, so.
So, you do have some people working.
Rick and Amanda. Rick Reedle.
How long have you been here, Russ?
Twenty-seventh of March is seventeen years.
Just in luck yesterday, huh?
Certainly.
Here's your proclamation.
Thank you very much.
And, you know, there is a great appreciation, I know it goes unsaid, but when people have emergencies and situations, you know, there's no pre-training or rehearsing for that, and for the calming effect that you offer, and to get accurate information, and I know we hear comments that, I mean, it's an outstanding job that all of you do, and so, you know, I think a lot of times we forget to thank people enough, and so, you know, sincerely we do thank you and appreciate you, and I know there's people in the community that have a great appreciation, but they just know that you're one of the people on the other end of the line if they ever need you, so thank you.
I've also put together a bunch of activities and things for next week to help us celebrate, so if you see any of them walking around in their pajamas or anything like that, we're just having a good time, so.
So, you dressed up today for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we put on our clothes and everything, just our hair.
Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hey. Thank you, Russ. I don't know, we did that for our record. And is there anyone here, for the other proclamation we have is the Sexual Assault Awareness Month?
I have a good for everybody.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read through at least most of this. Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment harm our community. Statistics show one in five women and one in 71 men will be raped at some point in their lives. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys, one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Whereas young people experience heightened rates of sexual violence, youth ages 12 through 17 are two and a half times more likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. Whereas on campus, one in five women, one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. Whereas we must work together to educate our community about the sexual violence prevention, support survivors, and speak out against harmful and perpetuating attitudes and actions. Whereas with the leadership and dedication, prevention is possible. It is time for us all to become aware and educated and take action as a community to create a safer environment for all members in Dixon County. Whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with Dixon County to support the efforts of the national state, local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in the public and private endeavors to prevent sexual violence. Therefore Dixon County hereby proclaims April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month and pledges to join advocates and communities across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence. It is hereby proclaimed that we adopt this proclamation, I would so move that we do so.
Second.
And the motion and the second, is there any other discussion or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And we can send this copy to D-VAC or whoever happened to send it to us. I know D-VAC works a little bit out of Salina, but they also have volunteers and representatives here and provides sometimes safe housing, or counseling, or just whatever the need is, so. Two copies here to sign. Okay, at this time, we'll have a report from the county officers, so Brad, if you would go first.
Yeah, I'll start out with some good news that H-Pak shares after some meetings that Martin and John have had with them, have agreed to honor our price from last year for the asphalt that we'll be purchasing from them. Martin estimates that he's gonna need roughly 11,000 tons this summer for our guys to do the skim coating on 22 miles of our asphalt roads, and that the current price of asphalt is $55, they've allowed, or agreed to allow us to retain the $45 per ton price from last year, which if you do the math, that's about a $110,000 savings, so that's a big thing. So, we're pleased that they were able to do that and look forward to that, so. You have in your packet the invitation to the NGA luncheon on April 26th, and I'm assuming everybody will be attending that, which is on Wednesday, so unless I hear definitely all of us, we'd be everybody for that. We did have a little issue Monday with some drainage in the courthouse. We have a sump down in the boiler room that has a pump that pumps the water that goes into the window wells on either side of the courthouse, out into a sewer line that goes out to the other side of the building, that had backed up, and through that investigation we determined that that sewer line had been collapsed and was no longer usable. For some reason, something had settled out underneath the exercise area or the small building we have, so we had the plumbers in and were able to reroute the pipe internally into another sewer line to discharge that water. We had that problem taken care of, but obviously, we couldn't dig up the, underneath the building or the exercise area to repair that, so I think we gotta take care of it right now, but just another one of those ongoing issues that we have. So, I've provided you with the year-to-date staffing and budget reports, and on the staffing report, you can see we've got some activity. Obviously, you're aware of, from the department reports and the information I presented, we had some people who had already transferred from one department internally to another, but we got a couple with design, and we did a couple hires, so maybe we'll get fluid here last month, which is good to see some hires come in to some of the open positions. As far as the budget report, it's pretty early in the year, so nothing too alarming there, we got a couple accounts that are in the red, but Janelle assures me when the tax money comes in from the levees on that, that'll be fine, so. We did do fuel bids this morning, diesel fuel, we needed diesel fuel, and we received two bids, one was from real KC for $1.95 a gallon, and then Robson's was $1.97, so we ordered it to MKC, being a lower bid. And then we have certain items that have been added to your agenda, we'll all go through when we get to those, so that's all of your.
Okay, thank you. Doug, do you have anything you would want to bring up this time?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay.
The sales tax here, I'm looking, looked at it here, Brad, was?
Well, I'll be completely honest, Craig, when it's good.
Well, I didn't, yeah, I didn't even look at it till I just got to looking at it.
So, it's down from February to, or from last month, pardon me, but it's higher than last year at this time?
By about $4,000 or $5,000, it's like, yeah. And I guess I would expect that with December being a big month with Christmas, so. So I guess it's good that it's higher than last year at this time, but it is down from November, so probably a little bit in November, since people shopping for the Christmas season, getting geared for that, but hopefully it'll stay at that number, a little bit higher, or come back up a little bit, so. And of course, with special sales tax proportion is the same, so.
The, I know we've talked about this before, and I've forgotten about, when do we have, if we want to renew the special road and bridge deal, when will we have to get that out so we don't, you know, if we want to keep it going?
We're in our second year of.
Oh, just second year?
Right.
We started in 15.
Okay, by the time we collected it, yeah, we.
Well, yeah, it was past in 15, right?
We started collecting in April of 15.
Okay. So, we just started, or be the third year.
Third year coming up, okay.
Yeah, we'll have to do something before the fifth year, so.
Right, back into the fourth, if you want to continue.
Okay. On notices and communications, I received a packet here, and it's in regards to Paperwork Reduction Act, and so, it's probably, yeah, so, you know, it'll be even a smaller packet next year, but anyway, that, you know, it is certainly helpful that that's something that is being considered, and I think it's in regard to the census, and they went ahead and typed your name in here, LeBurn, so they're counting on you to, you have less paperwork to fill out in 2020 because this is already filled out, but anyway, that seemed like good news.
I'll take that because that's, I'm sure, I'm sure he takes care of the census, so.
Okay. And then we also, from governing magazines, received their monthly magazine, so that's there to take a look at. I did not have any other communications, other than the comments that I received on your letter, or information in the newspaper, LeBurn, and anybody have anything else? Okay, otherwise, we'll go to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, we had to consider the approval of the bids for the road sealant project, and Brad, if you would.
Yes. This year, we have the, what we call the mastic sealant project. Martin plans to do about 25 miles of mastic sealant. He did reach out to three vendors to get bids on doing that, and we only received one bid back, which was from Hall Brothers. Hall Brothers are the ones that did the project for us last year. And for the three locations, which includes 12 and a half miles of Fair Road, 4 and a half miles of Hawk Road, and 10 miles of Rain Road, the bid with traffic control is So, it's our recommendation, and that's budgeted for, it's our recommendation that we go ahead and accept that bid and notify them to get that project scheduled, so.
And the timeline for completion once it's approved?
Whether it will be, will depend a little bit on it, but probably sometime in the middle of May would be when the temperature and the seasoning is right to be able to do that work, so. We're hoping by notifying them earlier, we can get scheduled into their calendar.
Have all the roads been?
Prepared.
Yeah.
They're actually preparing as we speak, so, yeah, they've been out crack sealing and working on those every bit that they can, give or take weather recently.
Yeah.
But, yeah, they're back out crack sealing today, and have been every day that they could when it's not raining, so they will be ready by that time.
The traffic control, last year, did we do some of that ourselves, or?
No, actually. No, actually, we allowed them to do it. They contract with another company, and that includes a pilot vehicle and signage and everything, and the traffic control is, is just shy of fifteen thousand dollars on the, on the project, but that's right in the middle when we're also doing our overlay and also our skim coating, and we just don't have the staff to be able to do both, so.
I wonder if we accept the bid of Hall Brothers for four hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, twenty cents for the skim coating? Yeah, yeah, I'll say that.
Yeah, that's basically what it is.
Yeah.
Surface seal.
Surface seal. I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second for that, and as Brad mentioned in his report, that's for Fair Road, Hawk Road, and Rain Road portions of that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
You know, the only thing I would add on that is when we went out to Jeep Road this morning, you know, we drilled one portion of Jeep Road that we did last year, and to me, it looks remarkably well. It almost looks as good as it did the day they finished it last year, so it's, it appears to be holding up very well, so. And that is a new process that just came about the last couple of years, so hopefully it continues to, to wear like it has the last twelve months, so.
Well, it extends the life and to maintain a road compared to have to replace it, it's.
Absolutely.
It's a very worthwhile project. Next item we have is a copy machine, and this is a request from the county attorney's office, and they did go out and receive three bids from Central Office Products, Clay Center, Key Office Products of Salina, Century Business Systems of Salina. The recommendation we have from staff is for the Century Business Systems of Salina, the amount was three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, and that is the low bid and the savings over the other two bids. And I'd move that we go ahead and accept that bid.
Second.
We have the motion and the second to accept the bid of Century Business Systems Salina, three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. This is for the copier machine for the county attorney's office. Any further discussion?
Well, I just noticed there's quite a difference in the bid price, but you feel like all three of those copiers are comparable?
Comparable. They are, yeah, they, they've got different functions and stuff that they come with, but the base that they requested, they're all very comparable, believe it or not, so. That, that's also the same copier that was purchased last year for Environmental Services, and they've been very pleased with it, so.
Sometimes some of the other ones, they're higher priced and they have more bells and whistles than what we need to, so, as long as it's, it meets our needs. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next item we have, Brad, if you'd go ahead and take care of this, on the lease purchase for a new ambulance.
Yes, as you know, we have an ambulance on order. It will be delivered sometime middle of the year. Janelle has done the legwork to reach out to the local financial institutions to see if, first of all, they were interested in getting involved in the lease purchase, and second of all, to submit their bid on what their interest rates would be for that. The total price of that's two hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. We, she did receive back three bids, First National Bank, I hope, which is four point one percent, the Dickinson County Bank at three point two-five percent, and the First Bank of Kansas at three point five. It's her recommendation, and my recommendation, ours, that we do the lease purchase through the Dickinson County Bank at the lowest interest rate as bid.
So move.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have the motion and the second that we accept the recommendation to use Dixon County Bank, and they have the lowest interest rate of three point two-five percent, and this is for the lease purchase of the twenty seventeen Freightliner ambulance. Any other questions or comments?
What, was all the banks notified in the county about that?
Yes, they were all sent notices.
And these the only three that responded, then?
I had one other respond and said that that's not a program that they offer, so.
And we know that some of the other banks just don't get involved in lease purchases, but they were all sent notices, so.
And it is like any other item, say like this or even similar, if someone wants to be involved with the bidding process or get the information, I mean, you know, please notify us and, but it's, it's good to have three bids. Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item we have is a letter to the congressional delegation, and some of this was prompted by, the Kansas Association of Counties is sending out a similar type letter, and at our meeting the other day, Randall Allen, the director, mentioned that he already had a response of support back from Senator Roberts' office, that this is something that does impact the counties, and so, we have these letters prepared if we would like to send one, we have two, Congressman Representative Roger Marshall, Senator Pat Roberts, and also Senator Jerry Moran.
And it has to do with the tax exempt status on municipal bonds.
Correct.
Certainly, they're tax exempt and federal government is looking at doing away with the tax exemption to generate more money for their infrastructure needs.
Of course, it's a funding mechanism that municipalities and counties use, so.
You want me to read what we're sending to them?
Yes, yes, that'd be fine.
Yeah, during two thousand seventeen, we'll have the opportunity, dear Representative Marshall, you'll have the opportunity to address the issue of continuing the tax exemption certificate of municipal bonds. Between two thousand two and two thousand thirteen, local authorities across our nation finance three point two trillion dollars in infrastructure investments through tax-exempt municipal bonds. Without their exemption status, the debt burden for these projects would have increased by billions of dollars. Many of these projects simply would not have moved forward if not for the benefit of the tax exemption provided. And there's more to it, but that's the best of it, it's gonna, you know, where do you, save some money to cost somebody else money, and we're all kicking out of the same pot, so.
Well, it has a direct influence on us if, if we bond for our justice center and all at once, it would, have an idea how much it forced the interest rate up.
You know, I don't, I haven't had time to look at it, but I'm sure that seventeen point seven million would go up by a million or two over a period of time, you know, the life of the bonds, so.
It's just another one of those things that, like I say, it, anything that increases interest rate, and this, this would force interest rates up, I'm sure.
Well, and you have to have the people buying the bonds as well as the issuing of the bonds, so, so it's, you know, it's all connected. Any other discussion on this or questions? We'll need a motion to send these letters on behalf of.
So move.
The county.
I'll second it.
We have the motion and the second to send a letter to the congressional delegation of Kansas in regards to this exemption status for bonds, municipal bonds. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I believe that's all we have.
Yeah, I signed that one already.
Yeah, let's go, sign those, please.
Were we supposed to sign these instead?
There's one date, one.
One date, yeah.
Just as long as you get one date, one.
Yeah, just, yeah. We have a copy for each one, and then we'll keep letters on file, and you might let Randall know they're at the Kansas Association of Counties and just said that, either send them a copy or just let them know that we have sent a letter there. You know, the, while you're signing that, this morning when we had our discussions, and Carol Whitehair was in here, she had been back to Washington DC about many of the issues that they're facing and some of the red tape and so on, and mentioned she thought she really had a good response and good visit with all of the delegation there, and I think others that you visit with that have gone back to Washington DC, I think we're very fortunate that, it seems like the senators and congressmen are very responsive, and that one-on-one certainly helps, and of course, it's helpful when they come back to our area too and visit, so. Okay, is there a motion? I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
We got the motion, the second for adjournment, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned.